This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular city council meeting at six P. M. Could we have the roll call, please?
Matthew Maggard.
Here.
Billy Poe.
Here.
Kinda.
Lance Smith.
Here.
Jody Wilkinson. Charlie Proctor.
Here.
Stephen Spina.
Here.
Ken Burgess.
Here.
Melanie Munson.
All right. I believe we're going to have Pastor Steve Azariah do the prayer for us, please. If you'd all stand, and then we'll do the pledge.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious and eternal God, we come before you tonight with gratitude for the gift of this community and the responsibility of leadership. As this council gathers to deliberate and make decisions, we ask for your presence to dwell among us. Grant each member wisdom beyond their own. Grant prosperity in thoughts and passion in heart. May differing perspectives be met with respect, and may unity be found in the shared goal of serving Tom good. Continuing to bless the city of Zephyr Hills, its families, workers, its first responders, its educators, and everyone who calls it home. Give strength to those who lead, peace to those in need, and give hope to those who feel forgotten. This we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. All right. Thank you, sir. And now we will move on to the mayor. The mayor is not here, but I will handle it for her. Chief, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good evening. Derek Brewer, Police Chief, City of Zephyr Hills. Tonight, I would like to introduce, like to reintroduce you to one of our officers. Where's she at? Officer Gabby Valley was born and raised in Zephyr Hills, where her deep passion for helping others motivated her to pursue a career in law enforcement. A graduate of PHSC Police Academy, she started her career with the Zephyr Hills Police Department, getting valuable experience and a strong sense of community connection. After some time away, Officer Valley is returning to the Zephyr Hills Police Department to continue her law enforcement career, a calling that she has always been deeply committed to. Outside of work, she enjoys fishing at the beach with her wife while watching the sunset, spending time at the gun range, and reading law enforcement-related books to keep her knowledge and sharp, skills very sharp. She is very thankful for the support of her parents, wife, and family as she begins this new chapter in her journey. Officer Valley loves her community and is proud to serve the people of Zephyr Hills once again, doing what she cares about most, protecting and helping others. At this moment, I'm going to bring up her wife, Toby. Go ahead. Well done. That's one of the quickest ones we've had. All right. Raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Gabriella Valley.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
A citizen of the state of Florida.
And the United States of America.
And the United States of America.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Florida.
And the Constitution of the state of Florida.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Domestic and foreign.
Domestic and foreign.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
Loyalty.
Loyalty.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
The duties of a police officer.
The duty of a police officer.
For the city of Zephyr Hills.
For the city of Zephyr Hills.
On which I am about to enter.
And which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Got it. One. That's what taught me about the way. There we go. One, two, three. Very good. Thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Chief. Well, I made a little mistake. I skipped over the citizens' comments. Do we have anyone signed up for any citizens' comments?
We do not.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council regarding anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, I will move forward. Miss Tina Gorman? Sorry about that. Oh, and if everyone could silence their phones, please.
Good afternoon, Council. Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Tania Gorman. I'm the Pasco MPO Executive Director. I'm coming here before you this evening to welcome you to a principal's workshop that'll be occurring on behalf of the regional merger that we've been talking about for some months now, over the, well, some years now. I will have to say, this predates me, I guess, going back thirty or forty years at this point. But before I get into the invitation, I just want to give the council a recap of where we were, where we're going, and where we've been, and where we're going. So back in December of two thousand and twenty-four, we had explored what a regional merger would look like based off the initiative that the legislation provided us during that year, and had asked us to do a kind of rough study of what it would look like if we all merged. We submitted that in December of two thousand and twenty-four, and we had told the legislation that we would, next steps would be, that we would get a consultant and have a high-level overview, or objective overview of what the merger would look like with Pasco, Pinellas, and Hillsborough together. Why we wanted to merge, or why we've been kind of talking about the merger, is because Tampa Bay is growing fast. We know this. I moved here in two thousand and nineteen, and all I saw were beautiful cows, and now I can't get out of my house on Chancy Road. So we know we're growing fast. We want to consolidate to be stronger, faster, and efficient, and also align with the regional goals of how we want to move our people and our services and our goods around the Tampa Bay area. So right now, currently where we are, is we have a consultant with White House Group that is supporting our efforts, being the objective party, gathering all of our data and all of our governing board information documents, how we operate as the three MPOs, and they are reviewing it to help us have, facilitate conversations like the one we have here coming up on November seventeenth. Currently, we also just concluded our FHWA peer workshops. We met with several of our MPOs across the nation, having conversation with each director, staff, on what it looked like to be a part of an MPO that merged. And my mind was, the conversation's very interesting. And we all are different. There's four hundred and eleven MPOs across the nation, and there's twenty-seven MPOs in Florida, and we all operate differently. So coming to a consensus, as you can see, will be quite a challenge, but honestly, in the end, it will make us grow stronger as a region. At the end of the month as well, we've invited our MPO Board elected officials to attend Metro Plan, which is a merged MPO, which houses Osceola, Seminole, and Orange County. That MPO director is Gary Hutman. He has welcomed us in, and we'll all be traveling over there on October twenty-seventh. So if you'd like to join, you're more than welcome to as well. Some of the challenges, of course, we can highlight all of the amazing benefits, but we know some of the challenges of having a merged MPO is, you know, united, the data, getting our documents, deciding on a governing board, deciding in general if we want to merge. We've had this discussion now for thirty or forty years. This is where we have come to right now, which we have consultants. I think this is the farthest we've got to date, so we're making history here. So you guys are a part of history with us. So where do we, how do we move forward? We continue to learn by our, by our MPO colleagues, and we attend this principal workshop that I'm inviting you all to on November seventeenth. We'd like to hear from the staff, the board, our host agencies, elected officials, on how we can move this merger forward, and some of the discussions you'd like to have as a city. The cities are very important. Even though we know the region, we come together as the counties, the cities are just important because we all live in this in the cities, right? So we want to hear from you, how you'd like to move forward, and I came here tonight to invite you all to the principal's workshop on the seventeenth. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Welcome. Thank you. What is, what were the three counties you said, in Orange County, Seminole, and?
Orange, Seminole, Osceola.
Osceola. Okay, thank you. Do you have any fears that Pasco, being the smallest county and kind of the crown of Tampa Bay, would be marginalized at all if we do join?
Well, you know, we are based off the decennial census. That's how apportionment works. So we are coming up, actually, we just did our decennial census in two thousand and twenty. Two thousand and thirty is the next decennial census, and that's how we make our board apportionment, is by the size of population. Right now, we're looking to expand our board to about twenty-five. It's a very large board. That will include the airport and the port as a sitting seat, and then from there, we will look at how we want to maximize our seating. I don't want to get into numbers too much because as now, right as of right now, things are changing on how much and where we're going as far as seating, but we did discuss in our Pasco MPO Board specifically that the cities would have one rotating seat so that where there could be a voice coming from the cities on the board. So that was the decision that, and Councilman Smith, you can attest to that. We were there that day. Thank you, our, you know, Mayor Black speaking up as well from Dade City to ensure that that was something that the MPO Board was wanting to have there. But not only that, the cities will be represented, can be represented, can be represented also as committees underneath the board. That's how Metro Plan functions. So they honestly have a very good dialogue with their board layer, and they have a cities layer, and then that's how they work. Now, some MPOs throughout the state, they may have rotating seats and backup, so you kind of don't, no one gets left out. There's many ways to look at this MPO. So it's not just kind of like, you know, bigger piece, smaller piece. Yes, there may be more seats, but that's depending on population, but we also have to look at what alternatives we can utilize to make maybe the seats more weighted. You know, there's other avenues to look at when we're coming into this dynamic.
Yeah, because I think we, when, when I was elected a year and a half, two years ago, I guess, whenever it was, we were looking at having like an alternate board member, and then we were told we couldn't. So I think I would like to see that to where we always had representation on the board if our member was unable to attend. I think that would be important. So that's something I would like to look at.
Correct. We spoke to River to Cog MPO in Connecticut, Hampton Roads MPO in Virginia, and Rio Grande MPO in Texas. One of the three, I can't recall now, I think it may have been Hampton Roads, they had a three-tiered kind of board approach system, how they operated. And so we wanted to dig into that with them a little bit more when they came down to speak because it sounded like there was kind of fairness in how they did their voting. So again, every MPO works differently. They were not stuck into one track. Every MPO across this whole county, I mean, the state, we all work differently. So there are multiple ways to make sure that the cities are heard.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, and that was our concern, all the cities' concerns on the board, was being if we get merged with the larger, larger counties that we're going to lose out, but the amount of dollars we receive is going to be the same. We're going to, our area's going to be able to apportion it. The way they explained it to us was we'd be, we'd be a better contender for some really large federal dollars as they're available for the region, like for a huge interchange on, on two seventy-five, or, or something going to the port, or some things like that. So I think that, I think that our District Seven felt like we were missing out on it by not all being a consolidated group, so.
Because right now, we're looked at as the Pasco MPO, kind of like, you know, MPO or county in Arkansas. Whereas if we were all merged together, we can look like a, you know, MSA of like Boston, or, you know, Seattle, where you're kind of high level, you're looking, oh, wow, this is actual population if we're all merged together. That's how it works. So you kind of strengthen numbers.
So on our Pasco MPO, how many members do we have right now?
Nine.
No, I'm talking, not, nine.
You need the board?
And just one. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, all the cities, well, four of the cities.
Four of the cities, and then all of the county commissioners?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said that the regional one would be twenty-five members?
Correct, twenty-five.
So you know, so I'm thinking that like Tampa and St. Pete, Clearwater, they're going to command a pretty good chunk. So I could see how you feel like you'd get lost, but I also kind of think that maybe it could benefit us too, because as we look at our, our growth plan that we're talking about, and especially our industrial corridor, so, and you talk about the ports and things, and I know there's a move towards what they call those inland ports. And I mean, we want Chancy Road four-lane, we're going to have ninety-eight four-lane, we would be able to go to the east, we can go straight up thirty-five A or Old Lakeland Highway. If we could get like a four-lane, go right past both Zephyr Hills and Dade City, ride on up to fifty, which is going to be four-lane both directions, all going to Orlando one way, and, I mean, that, that could be a benefit to us, actually.
Yeah, and I was.
And that would help our, you know, what we're trying to do with our growth out in that area, especially our industrial quarter, which I think we can offer up a, a nice buffer before the green swamp of residential up to industrial, light industrial, instead of building subdivision all the way right up to the green swamp. So I think it could be a benefit.
If I could, I was thinking that the benefit could be also where, if there's a, like, we were hoping to get three oh one four-laned, and Hillsborough wasn't really in favor of it. If we're one group, that might be a more of a smooth process.
Right.
Getting the roads aligned that come up and out and different places, and not, not so much worry about county lines.
Correct. Advocacy reaches a whole nother level.
Right.
When we talk about the regionalism, you know, the MPOs would be going to work every day, not solely for each of their counties, but for their regional good. And then you also have to think, if we're positioned here on the west, then you have another merged MPO on the east, and now we have kind of a great buffer in the middle to really look at across the swath of middle of the state, how we're moving our peoples and goods. So it's a very, it's a, it's a very long conversation. I think right now, we are just in the throes of just having the discussions, making sure we reach out to our elected officials, our cities, and our stakeholders, and have these discussions, and really invite you guys to come and listen and put your input in, because that is the best part of the MPO. That's why I joined the job, is the outreach to the community. So there's a way for the federal government to talk to our cities and counties.
Would us merging help us with grants and such?
Correct. The discretionary grants, once again, you'd be looked at a larger part of the pie, right? We're a very large nation. So, you know, when discretionary dollars, when we're applying, we have to be able to be standing out as, you know, how many people per capita, how many people here are you trying to serve? So yes, by population, we would be very large.
Thank you. Thank you for living in Zephyr Hills.
And I happen to live in Zephyr Hills.
It's a great city.
Yes.
Do we have any more questions?
No, I just want to thank Tania for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. I appreciate what you're doing. And what Councilman Spina said is exactly right. The traffic doesn't know that you go from Hillsborough to Pasco County. It doesn't know that. So I think a coordinated effort between the counties is a really good thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. All right. Moving forward, we will move to the consent agenda items. We have ten consent agenda items on the, on the meeting tonight. We can pass them all at once, or we can pull any for discussion. I'll turn it to the council.
I move we accept all ten.
Second.
I got a motion in a second, I guess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We will move forward to Advent Health rezoning.
Yes, I'll take that. This is the second reading of ordinance number one five zero eight dash two five. Ordinance of the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, proposing amendment to the city's zoning map designation, changing the zoning designation from city R four multifamily residential and PUD planned unit development to city C three general commercial for approximately twenty-two point seven two acres of real property identified with parcel identification numbers three five two five two one zero zero one zero one one eight zero 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 zero. Three five two five two one zero zero one zero one one eight zero 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 one zero. Three five two five two one zero zero one zero zero nine one zero 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 zero. And thirty-five twenty-five twenty-one zero zero one zero zero nine one zero 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 one zero, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and effective date.
Okay. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Zero? I think zero is what I wanted to add. Will McCaff, planning department here with the city of Zephyr Hills, for this item, as city attorney stated, it's about twenty-three acres. It's currently situated right east of Dairy Road and north of Daughtry Road. The current use is an unpaved parking lot. There's not a lot going on there. They do have a community garden on site, as we discussed at the first hearing. The main change we had discussed was adding restrictions to the C three zoning use, voluntary deed restrictions that the applicant had offered, and those will be included in y'all's, in the packets. The traffic hotspots at US three oh one and Daughtry are going to be addressed subsequently with a traffic study that will occur following site plan review and engineering. Beyond that, the applicant did advise that they planned on retaining the community garden on the site as it is. It's currently operated and maintained by the Advent Health Hospital. There also are plots that are open for anyone to come in and utilize on their own. Beyond that, I don't really have anything. There's no real new developments on this one after our first hearing.
Do we have any, before I open up the public hearing, do we have any more questions, Will?
I just noted, I would like to note that the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, Restrictions is listed with the ordinance, and will be recorded, so.
Yes.
And that's what we had talked about at the last.
Yep. I saw everything that we asked for was in there. So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Thank you, Will. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this item?
No one signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item tonight?
I'll just add that I think the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions was slightly amended to add another couple, one or two uses. I don't know, Barbara, if you want to speak to that, just so we have it on the record.
Okay, that'd be great.
In that, you all will record once we record the ordinance.
If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. Barbara Willhite, sixty-three twenty-seven Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, for Advent, our applicant here. We did, we were asked, we've done this three times now, three rounds of working on these prohibited uses with your staff, and we added mini warehouse and recreational vehicle storage to the prohibited use list after your hearing last time, at the, at the discussion, as a discussion point. These are voluntary deed restrictions for the record, so we were not told we had to do this. We volunteered to do this. We were asked about those uses, and we said absolutely we'll prohibit those as well. So that's the update since the last time we saw you.
All right.
And I did see that offices and trade fleet are permitted as related uses to your business or that business.
That's correct.
But not independently.
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
No, I want to thank y'all for, for doing the deed restrictions. That was important to us. Thank you again for working.
Absolutely. I'm glad we found a good solution to work together and move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Sorry to put you on the spot.
All right. I guess I can close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd move approval of this item.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. It looks like ordinance one five zero eight two dash two five. That's not part of that, is it?
No.
This is all part of that.
That's all the same.
Thank you.
Yeah, next item's business item, three point one.
Thank you.
And this is for Zephyr Hill City Park signage, so I don't know. This is your item, Todd, if there's somebody, or if the council just wants to address it.
Well, I kind of talked with Todd, well, emailed Todd and Gail about it, and asked a few questions. So I don't know who, were you going to present it?
Well, I wasn't asked to, but yeah, this, this was for the, the selection of two companies that we went out to bid for the signage for the parks. I think in your agenda packets, you have a list of the, the parks that'll be receiving entry signs. Again, there's two companies that were looked at, and the low bidder is what's being recommended to you tonight with the bid amount, doesn't exceed what we have budgeted for this, this item. So, yeah, I think Dr. Spin had question, a question that Gail had answered. I don't know, is there any other questions or issues on this?
Just an observation, there was a huge disparity in the pricing. Did you, y'all see that?
Yeah.
I mean, it was like double, and I just want to make sure that the staff felt it was apples to apples. I'm assuming they did, but I just found it odd that it was double, you know?
Well, yeah, that's a lot.
I found it odd that we had a consultant look at the, why, why wouldn't we do that in-house? I mean, don't, that we have a purchasing department.
I know. Gail's not in attendance tonight. She, I don't know, Ellen, if she's.
She's at a conference.
She's at FRA conference, but she may be online. I don't know if she is online tonight.
No.
Anyway, I take care of it.
Hey, this is Billy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, this is Billy. So we had a consultant look at it because they did the design.
Oh, suppose, really?
Yeah, Billy Poe, city manager. Sorry. So we had, we had a consultant look at it because they did the design, and so they helped us with the bid. So the bid packet was written, or the bid specs was written by the purchasing department, but the consultant looked at it to verify and just help us with, make sure that everything was apples to apples. We did have a third company that, that wanted to bid, but they called after the bid period ended to request the bid, and we told them, no, they couldn't do that per the rules. So we received the two bids that you see there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Billy. I believe we need a vote on this?
I move we accept staff recommendation and select Kinko signs and awnings for this project.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item three point two.
Well, this is the purchase of six one zero nine sixteen Street. It's a single-family residence. You know, Shane, are you talking about this item?
I can address it as well. Sorry. I told you no, but yeah. Shane, go ahead, and then I can fill in.
Good evening, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. A little summary, I know you have the memo and appraisals and everything in your packet, but we have a retention pond, a city retention pond on Sixteenth Street, right north of North Avenue, that's in a AE flood zone, where we've had problems with it during Hurricane Milton and Helene. We had water over the road and potential, it's just a stormwater mess out there. And we went out to look at a complaint one day, and I happened to notice when we were looking at a complaint that that piece of property was up for sale. So Rob Finell and myself, we looked at it, and we're like, you know, we could double the capacity of this retention pond and maybe solve some of these flooding issues, because these parcels don't come up for sale very often. And it just seemed like good timing. So we, I mentioned it, the city manager, Poe, and we had a couple of appraisals done on it, and we've reached out to the realtor and made an offer. City Attorney Maggard has written a contract and purchasing the house for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then our intent is, is to work with code enforcement, demo the house, and then, you know, dig it, dig the, dig the lot out just a little bit, but we will have a consultant engineer the retention pond, and we'll get a swift mud permit to design the retention. The current pond that's there now is pre-swift mud. It doesn't have a swift mud permit on it.
Okay.
So we can double the size of that pond and maybe fix some of the flooding issues in that neighborhood.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Did this house, was the property flooded at all during Milton, do you know, or?
I talked to- I talked to the realtor, and the realtor said that it didn't get inside the house, but it was real close.
It was on the property.
Oh, yes, yes, the whole, the whole, almost the whole lot's in a AE flood zone, and the road.
Right. Okay, all right, thank you.
And it's a, the contract's a standard Farbar contract, which is just standard residential real estate contract. List uh, me is handling the closing, and it's already signed by the sellers and by Billy, but it's contingent on your approval tonight. So if you don't approve it tonight, the contract's void. If you do, we're ready to go, so.
Well, personally, I think it's a great idea if we could alleviate some of the flooding in that area, which always does flood even without hurricanes, so. If we don't have any more questions?
And I, I'll just say that I, I talked to the city manager on this when they were in, involved in negotiating on it, and I looked it up, and it's unfortunately, they had put a new roof, new flooring, new, a lot of new things on it, so that's, you know, you hate to see that, but hopefully the city can use some of those items when we buy it elsewhere. I mean, it's got n- new refrigerator, can't use the shingles or anything, but as much as we can repurpose, it'd be nice for we just knock it down, so. But, but I would have liked it just to have been a flooded out, gutted house, but that wasn't the case, so.
We'll cannibal- cannibalize and salvage anything we can out of the house, especially the appliances and that type of stuff.
You got a new refrigerator as a city item.
Do we have any more questions for Shane or for Billy? I mean, or for Matthew?
No, I just think it's a good first step, because, you know, we're gonna be looking to do this probably in Henry Drive and Ninth Avenue, but different places, and and these are the kind of things we can do ourselves without waiting for huge grants and, and projects, so.
We have another one coming too, on sixteenth street by Alpha Village, but that'll be, yeah.
Um, let me ask you a question too, Shane, and I mean, I, I know eventually we, definitely you have to get a swift mud permit and all that kind of stuff, but is there any option for us? Let's say we were running into hurricane season now, June first was coming up. Would there be any possibility of, of as a per- preemptive thing to take some of the dirt out of there, since we're gonna do it anyways, and, and in larger capacity? I mean, we're at the end of the hurricane season, so we don't have to do it right now, but what I'm saying, would that be a possibility, or could we not touch it at all?
Well, when we demo the house, if we uh, lowered the elevation a little bit.
That's what I'm saying, if we could, we do something like that to start with.
You gotta get that foundation out, so you do.
Right.
Well, that's, that's what I mean. If we, if we actually did a little concave grading on the lot.
Right.
Okay. When we take the foundation out.
Exactly.
Right. You gotta, you gotta remove the foundation and any of that termite dirt.
But it, it does need to be surveyed, boundary topo, engineered, permitted, and
Right.
Once we own the property, we'll start moving forward with that.
Okay.
Well, I, if there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval of business item three point two?
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Three point three.
I'll take this one as well, Mr. President. Uh, three point three is first reading of ordinance number one five zero nine dash two five. Ordinate, in ordinance of the city council, the city of Zephyr Hills, Florida, amending section fifty-one point two three of the city code of ordinances, repealing and replacing the schedule of rates and charges for the use of or availability for the use of potable water, wastewater, sewer, and reclaimed water. Uh, effective honor after November first, twenty twenty-five, providing for repeal or severability and effective date.
Ted, you have something for us?
Yes, just a reminder, in the budget process, we talked about this water rate and sewer rate increase. It's three percent. It's a modest increase. The reptilus study indicated that it was called for. We have twenty million dollars worth of capital projects in the water and sewer funds during this fiscal year. And you can see in the memo the amount of capital that we spent in the previous fiscal years. Water and sewer is capital intensive. We have to go ahead and continue to do these rate increases so that we can go ahead and be prepared to put lines in and to to maintain our infrastructure. And with that, I'll entertain.
Ted, could you tell us on an average water bill, how much extra are we looking at roughly?
You know, that's a good question. Uh, we say like, once we did the calculation, if we did forty-one hundred gallons, it would go from sixty-eight eleven to seventy dollars and sixteen cents.
So a few dollars.
Two dollars, right.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions for Ted?
No, and I, I'd just like to say that before, we've not done it, and I think that was a mistake, because we had to come back and add a significant increase, because we, we let years go by without doing it, so.
Yeah, it's true.
I move that we
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Okay. I move we approve ordinance number one five oh nine dash twenty-five on its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
City managers' report.
Okay, well, the holidays are upon us, and we, of course, have Thanksgiving in December coming up. Um, the, the regular scheduled council meetings for November, of course, are November tenth and the twenty-fourth. Those for December are scheduled for December eighth and twenty-second. What staff is requesting council to consider and approve is the canceling of the two meetings before the holidays. That would be the November twenty-fourth and the December twenty-second meetings due to the, well, holidays.
Thank you, Todd. I, I don't know about the rest of you, but I won't be able to come to the twenty-second meeting in December, but I mean, I'm, I'm all for.
I vote, we make the city manager come and us take off.
I think that, you know, I question November twenty-fourth, though. I mean, that's Thanksgiving week, but we, uh, everybody works and we're open, and I, I don't understand why we would close that day.
The only thing I would say is a possibility is that um, the school's out that week, and there may be people, I mean, it wouldn't be us, wouldn't affect us, I guess, but I mean, I don't know if city sta- staff members, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, it's the only, only thing.
Well, as you saw in the agenda memo, we, we did have the caveat, you know, if you cancel the twenty-fourth meeting, if, if something were to arise that is important enough to schedule a meeting, we could always schedule a special meeting.
Well, and you know, if we cou- couple this up with the, the next item, we want to schedule a workshop on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Maybe we could do something, if you want to cancel the twenty-fourth, schedule the special meeting for November seventeen.
We'll talk about that.
And then we could add something to that if we had to.
That's a good idea.
So, if you want to, you know, I'll approve the first one if we do the second one. Or I mean, not approve, I'll both.
I was gonna say, is that a motion?
Well, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Yeah, is that a motion?
Was that a motion?
To combine the two items?
No. First one.
Oh, I see.
No, I don't want to make a motion on the first one.
I can't.
I don't know how to word it.
You
Well, we, we would.
Two dates.
Do you want, can we combine the two items?
Why don't we just, why don't we just cancel them, then we just add the workshop one in? Would that be, would that be the easiest, cleanest way?
All right, yeah. I mean, uh, all right, I move that we cancel November twenty-fourth and December twenty-eighth. And include, okay, second. All right, we have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Now we will move to
the workshop.
Yeah, the workshop.
Okay, yeah. Item four point two is, city manager and I have been having some discussions, as you see in the memo, we, we'd like to schedule a, a workshop. Uh, there's two things that we want to bring up at the workshop, uh, planning and visioning, and we want to talk some more about the water. Uh, two critical issues that we're, we're dealing with right now. Uh, as, as you see in the, the memo, the planning department and working with Tammy Veranna, we're continuing to work on it, update the, the city's comprehensive plan, and we feel like a, a, a good next logical step is to hold the visioning session. Part of that, we waited till we kind of worked through some of the water issues, and now we got the water use permit increase updated. We fe- feel like now's a good time to, to move forward with some vision, visioning. Uh, a visioning workshop, probably with staff, our consultant, the planning commission, city councils, what we've been thinking about and talking about. Uh, to, you know, to have some discussions about when we're, how we're gonna grow, what is it, what does it look like? Uh, talk about alternative ideas that staff has been discussing about when we're, how we grow, where it is, what it looks like, density, height, you know? Do we continue to grow further out? Do we re- refocus about reinvestment in the core, or we already have infrastructure? We won't get into all that tonight, but tho- those, some of the key topics that we need to have. A- and how water plays an important, big role of that. So I know, um, Mr. Bostic isn't here, I believe he's online, but um, you know, he's working with his consultants. Our staff's been helping them a little bit too, with, with continuing, continuing the discussion on the water. So, you know, water plays a big role in the future growth and development, so we thought we'd combine those two important topics in one, in one meeting. Well, we're not gonna solve it all in this upcoming meeting, but at least begin the discussion about where we're at, some ideas that we have, options, alternatives for water. Um, so, yeah, to what Councilman Spina said, wha- a- and we, we were actually on the, the call with our planning consultant, Tammy Veranna, today, talking about our housing element. We're gonna be bringing that probably forward, uh, to the planning commission, actually, this month, but I, I think what we were thinking, and what I've discussed with the city manager, is, you know, wh- within a month, probably towards the end of November, or up to early December, is what we talked about over the phone today, but I, I think we could probably make it happen towards the end of November, if, if that's the desire of council. Uh, we should have enough time to prepare and be ready for that.
Well, we could tentatively set the date, and then if you don't have everything prepared.
Yeah, I think that's the goal, is to confirm that you, the council is in agreement about holding this workshop about the two topics, and yeah, at least start with a tentative date, and then we'll.
Is everyone good with the twenty-fourth?
Well, you know, there's a noted item here where the city is working with Jones Edmonds to do a task order for forty-eight thousand dollars to find additional water for the future of the city's growth. And that we need to find new sources, because even with the new approved water uh, use permit, we're still capped out, basically.
Yeah, correct.
They, they're gonna have a hundred and twenty days to do this, which with all that they've had to put into this modification and everything, that, that seems a little long to me, but I don't know. We, we've got to get on this water thing, because we have people, you know, we've already had requests come in for different uses that you've presented, Todd, on outside the city limits, as well as um, how are we gonna even handle things within the city limits?
Correct.
So, you know, I don't think we can waste too much time, um, or take too much time is a better way to say it.
You're right.
Do you think November seventeenth is too soon then for this, what you want to do with this visioning session?
Well, they could certainly give us a preliminary.
Right, I tend to agree with, because they have to have something done already.
They've been working on it for three years.
Right, there ought to be enough information there to
All right.
Get it started.
All right, then, all right, then I, I move that we have a workshop on November seventeenth to go over the planning and visioning session and the water, and the preliminary water use discussion.
I'll second that, and, and also I think it's important that we think about Pasco County around us, what they're doing at, when we look at this too.
Hundred percent, yeah, we, we're having discussions about the JPA. We're gonna have to reintroduce that and work with Pasco County on an update to that joint planning area agreement, uh, yeah, other factors that we may have less control over what, what happens at Avalorum.
And the utility uh, services.
Service agreement, yeah.
Yeah, USA, yeah.
You know, we had the uh, we hosted the um, economic development conference, or what was it?
Summit.
Yeah, summit.
Last week, and um, Commissioner Wilton Smith was there, and he's talking about how doing away with property taxes, Avalorum taxes is a good thing. I mean, he literally said that, so. And we asked, well, what are you gonna replace it with? And they think sales tax. They think, that's what they think, but, so, I mean, these are all things that we need to be pretty aware of, because you know, if we don't have property taxes, basically, we don't have, we're out of business.
If that gets on, if that gets on the vote in, in November, it'll pass.
Oh, yeah.
There ain't no doubt about it.
Yeah. So.
And I think along with Pasco County, because uh, I don't think you were there yesterday, but David Engel, um, you know, did a presentation, and he talked about the importance of a balanced uh, tax base of not just the residential, but the, like we taught, well, especially because we have the industrial land, and, you know, light uh, industrial and commercial and things like that too, so having the Pasco County, we, yeah, we kind of need to know too, along with them, because where our city limits only goes so far there, and then the rest of the way is county, so.
And it's important to note, they're talking only about homestead exempt, homestead with property. So, commercial and industrial aren't going to exempt, so that's an important caveat there, but
Just your homestead.
Yeah, but I mean, I think sixty percent of our revenue is homestead.
Sure.
Absolutely.
And just as an update, uh, yeah, I talked with the council members and the mayor about two projects that you had referenced to Dr. Spinna, and uh, they're both, one's inside the JPA USA, and the, the other one's just outside it. The, the one off Old Lakeland Highway, Clark's Landing, uh, I spoke with the attorney on that one. It's been delayed for about three months. The, the other one, uh, we had a meeting, Bill, the city manager and I had a meeting with Clark Hobbie about the one on Forbes Road, and that one, uh, all the townhomes were a- as we had the discussions with them to reduce the density and the character compatibility issues that we had raised. Uh, the townhomes have been removed out of the project and the, the two smaller lot sizes in that development, so we're moving in the right direction, um, so I just wanted to provide an update on those two projects that we had brought up before.
Now, I have a motion and a second on the November seventeenth date. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, mayor's announcements. She's not here. Mayor's not here. City managers' announcements.
Hey, quickly, just quickly, I know I'm not there, but just quickly, I just want to give a big kudos to Ted and Jessica um, on the presentations that they give, Dave, on this past week regarding the bond ratings. Um, I know I sent a, a text to each of you with the preliminary ratings, which looked really good for us, but we'll find out more um, and have a presentation to each of you, or to council at the next meeting. Um, but just wanted to give a big kudos to Ted and Jessica, who absolutely, you know, knocked it out of the park. So, that's all I have for this evening. I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Billy. All right, it looks like uh, city attorneys' announcements.
Nothing for me, thanks.
Uh, city council comments. I'll start with Councilman Burgess.
Uh, I don't have anything tonight.
I don't have anything.
Councilman Spitt?
Well, I don't have anything either, but, but, but just one thing, I will say one thing. Um, I was just looking, and the water plant pays to the city about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in, in property taxes. So that tells you, and I think on my house, I'm like at three hundred dollars, so. The industrial is huge for us, you know, and we need to do everything we can to foster it, so. And I, I, I think what's gonna happen, I think they're gonna raise the exemption. I think they'll raise it to a hundred thousand dollars. I, I think that's where it's gonna come out, because I've been following it, so. But you, if you think about it, it probably should. It probably should, because when they put the twenty-five thousand dollar exemption in, how many years ago was that, you know? And I had a guy just buy a two hundred thousand dollar house and his tax was four thousand dollars, so, that's a killer.
Wow. Before I close.
Yes, I have one more item under the city managers. We were gonna put, I think you, on your diash, you have a email from Shane LeBlanc, and this is for a sidewalk alternative for, for South Avenue extension. He wanted to bring, it's not a, doesn't require an emotion or anything, but he just wants to try to get a consensus. Thank you.
Good evening again, Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director. You have a memo in your packet. We're doing the South Avenue Extension Project, going to the Armory north of Sixth Avenue. The project is totally funded by FDOT. But we've had multiple issues on this job. We've had TECO gas line conflicts, we've had water line conflicts, we've had sewer line conflicts. We have five hundred feet of, five hundred linear feet of roadbed that's unsuitable fill that we had to replace. It's just been one thing after the other. So, we have, I've reached out to DOT and asked them if we could exceed the contract amount, and they weren't very receptive to that, so we had to do a little collective bookkeeping for the project that, um, in the memo, you'll see we got two options in there. Option A, we have a hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of sidewalk work that we could take out of the project, and then option B, we could keep that sidewalk construction in the scope using city funds from our sidewalk fund. in the scope using city funds from our sidewalk fund, or seven hundred thousand dollars in petty for Pasco funding to pay that a hundred and nine thousand. If we don't do that sidewalk scope now, that's already been bid, we already have unit prices, if we go to do it later, it's gonna cost us more money because we would have to go out to bid, your economy of scale, and the Councilman Burgess asked me before the meeting, I'm sorry, I sent Eileen an email, but it didn't, it didn't work out for a presentation. I'll take, that's my fault, I'll take responsibility of that, but the sidewalk, if you picture Sixth Avenue and South Avenue, where we're gonna extend the road, is gonna go all the way down on the west side of the new road for the project limits, and it's also gonna come out onto Sixth Avenue and go all the way to Mathis Street. And we're already doing another sidewalk project on Sixth Avenue that's gonna connect to this project at Mathis Street. So the option is, do we pay for that a hundred and nine thousand out of city funds, or we just eliminate it from the scope? We're gonna have to go back and build it later, and it would probably be more money. So it just need, I talked to City Manager Poe about it this morning, he just said we need the council's um temperature, so to speak, consensus on yea or nay.
Well, I would hate to pay extra since we've already got it all drawn up, so I don't know, what do y'all think?
So this sidewalk will go from Mathis Street east to this, to South Avenue.
Yes.
And then north to where the Armory is.
Yes.
So the bulk of it really is South Avenue to the Armory.
Yes, it's five foot concrete sidewalk on the west side of the new road.
On the west side, so.
Yes.
All right, I'm thinking two things. One is, that's not really a high probably pedestrian traffic area, number one, that portion, but if it's connecting, what, what is it, what's the timetable? We haven't gotten a timetable on what the Sixth Avenue Extension.
It's in design and development. I don't have that timetable, but the plans, I think we're at thirty percent on the plans for that, so that.
And that would be this fiscal year then?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay.
And that um project would actually connect.
Right.
To this project.
I mean, that's.
Or we'd have to extend it.
Extend it. So we're gonna pay extra, if we want to go all the way to South Avenue, we'd be paying extra anyway, and even though, I mean, really, I don't think there's a lot of pedestrians are gonna be walking up South Avenue to Armory, but what do I know?
So.
I'm in favor of it.
Hey, one option we could do is, one option we could do is pull the, the Sixth Ave, um, or sorry, South Avenue sidewalk off of that, but still do the Sixth Avenue portion of it. That's always an option as well, just thought about that as we're, I'm listening to the conversation.
Because, yeah, because um, I mean, it could become a high traffic area someday, pedestrian traffic, I don't know, i- it, it could extend further north into an industrial part.
Right.
So it might be, even though today it might not have a lot of pedestrian traffic down the road, it might, if you extend that road, which is part of the plan, correct?
Yes, that, that's where we're at, we've, we have hundred percent construction plans.
Yeah, we got.
We have, it's already been out to bid. If we have to redesign it later.
I think if you have the, my feeling is, if you have the funding for it available, and we sometimes require other uh businesses to build a sidewalk to nowhere because of the potential for the extension further north, or, I mean, wherever in that case, but in this, kind of talking it out, I'm talking myself into it. I, I think we should do it personally.
Well, you started off lukewarm, and now you flip.
I know, yeah, I took myself right into it.
Now he's ready to start digging.
Yeah, I'll go out there. Well, at first I was thinking, no, it's gonna walk on there to the Armory, but if you're extending it north eventually, which we will do, it could become high tra- higher traffic, and it is important to link it to the other sidewalk on Sixth Avenue.
Yeah, when we.
My feeling is, I would just say individually, I, I'm for it.
When we finish the project, you would be able to walk on the sidewalk from the, the National Guard facility all the way to, all the way down Sixth Ave to.
City Hall.
City Hall, yeah.
Yeah.
No, it's not a sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I have no problem putting in sidewalks, but all the ones in my neighborhood never get used, all the people walk in the middle of the road rather than on the sidewalk, so.
Well, that's true.
You gotta put in the training program along with them sidewalks.
But if you, I think you have the money, it says here you have the money available.
Yes.
Well, that, that was my question, was, we have money, if, unless that's, the money we had was already earmarked for sidewalks somewhere else that we already had said we were gonna put them, then that would be different, but for, because I was thinking the same thing, maybe we don't need that last section yet, but if, if it's not already kind of like spoken for, I guess, specifically, then I think, like you're saying, we do, you know, we do make the sidewalks and trails because of future, and there is, there is gonna be expansion there at some point, so I think it is a good idea too.